Okay Commissioner.
I'm ready.
Three, two, one, go.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Work Sessions for June, no, for July 1, 2020, and this is regarding cost plan and HR rates. And by way of introductions, I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. We also have Vice Chair, Commissioner Mensah. I believe we have Commissioner Edwards in the B O C C room, do we?
Yes, we do.
All right, we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. And we have our HR Director Maria Ponte, welcome. And Maria, will you introduce your band of renown to us, please?
Thank you Commissioners, I'm Maria Ponte, HR Director, and with me today is Tara Wickline, Senior HR Analyst, and Tammy Devlin, Risk Manager. I will be presenting information on our unemployment fund. Tara will be presenting on the Benefits Administration Fund, and Tammy will do an overview of the Risk Fund.
Okay, no decisions are being made, this is just information, and we're good for an hour.
Well, so we are looking to get approval for our rates.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, and Commissioner, we are also joined this afternoon by members of Financial Services from the Auditor's Office to talk about the indirect cost plan. But we are looking for decisions about the rates. If not today, then on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, okay, thank you. So who's gonna start?
Okay, well, I'll get started unless there's any questions. And as I said, I'm doing an overview of the Unemployment Fund, which covers the cost for administration of the county's self-insured unemployment program. The rate allocation is calculated currently at .3% of the total payroll cost per office and department. That's approximately $253,000 annually. Each office and department contributes to this fund proportionate to the salary and expenses. We currently utilize .6 FTEs to manage the fund. That includes their salary, benefits, and employment taxes. Our budget goal is at least, is to maintain at least $1.5 million to $2 million. That covers two years of unemployment claims and expenses in the event of a major furlough. Next slide, please. This slide here shows you the tenure financial plan, and it dates back to 2016 through 2025. If you look at our estimates for 2020, we are approximately at $1,813. In the past few years, we haven't had huge claims numbers. Obviously, with the uncertain economic future, that could change. But based on what we're collecting and what we've spent, we project that we should have adequate funding to pay any layoffs, for any layoffs. And I would be working with Robin at a point where we needed to adjust the .3%. So I'm trying to keep this fairly brief. Do you have any questions for me on the Unemployment Fund?
I don't see or hearing anything yet. Nope, not yet, Maria, thank you.
Great, so I'll pass the baton on to Tara to talk about Benefits Administration.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So our Benefits Administration Fund, that pays for 2.7 FTEs to operate the fund, pays for their salaries, their benefits, and, you know, operating expenses. The FTEs that are paid out of this fund, they take care of the administration of all of the county's employee benefit programs, our medical, our dental, you know, all our voluntary lines. We also handle the payroll changes that need to be made for employees. The rates out of this fund, those are all allocated out for FTE across the county. Our goal has been to have a $200,000 reserve in the fund. The point of that is to cover three months of operating costs, as well as any unanticipated Affordable Care Act liabilities, should we ever, you know, incur a penalty for something in that. For the last few years, from 2019 through, and actually through next year, we have been reducing the reserve amount that has been in this fund to get down to that $200,000 goal. Next slide, please. You'll see here for 2020... Or, I'm sorry, for 2021, our estimated ending fund balance is actually going to be less than that $200,000, or projected to be $176,000. Historically, we have underspent this fund, but we need the expenditure authority in the event we ever do incur any penalties under the Affordable Care Act, or if we should need to hire a consultant because of that. So keeping the 2019, 2020 rate for 2021 means that the fund will be reduced to roughly $180,000. We would like to actually see this reduction in the fund balance before making any adjustments, and deciding if we truly need that $200,000, or if it's sustainable as we have it now. So anybody have any questions, Robin?
I do have a question. I see that, from what I can see on the personnel, I have Personnel Services revenue line, it looks like you're keeping the rate the same for 2021, but it also looks like you intend to double that rate for 2022. Is that an accurate way to read this?
It is, yes. So the rates from, you know, 2019 to through 2021, those have been lower than normal on purpose, because we have been trying to decrease the ending fund balance in this account. That $309,000 that we're expecting in 2022 is a more realistic number, and doesn't include any kind of a reduction, because at that point, we will have reduced the fund down to where it should be.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm wondering what the impact would be on the General Fund in 2022 to... Because you're approving rates for the biennium, not only 2021. So that's a pretty hefty increase to double the rate, and I'm wondering what the impact on the General Fund will be.
Edwards here, can you hear me?
No, hang on Gary, is there an answer to that Tara?
Not off the top of my head, I would have to look into that.
Yeah, she'll need to get back to us.
Okay, go ahead Gary.
By increasing that, you know, doubling it, you might say, I mean, that's two FTEs, isn't it? If you look at it from that position, that we'd be eliminating to do that, or be able to, unable to fund. And I guess I'd need to know why that is.
So the reason for increasing the rate is, as Tara had stated, in this year, in 2019, 2020, and what's proposed for '21, is a rate that is bringing in much less revenue than what you've approved for spending from this fund. And once we get the fund balance down, you're going to need to adjust those rates up. You know, and that's why I asked about what is the impact to the General Fund?
To me, the impact looks like it's two FTEs.
Well... That's why we'd like to do a little research and get back to the Board on that.
Okay, so Tara, I'm looking at your assumptions, a 2% increase in, for salaries, I understand that, and 4% increase in medical. The retirement's decreasing by 10 and a half percent, is that, that means we have that, explain that to me, please?
Well, it's decreasing down to 10.48%. Right now, the retirement percentage for PERS is 12.86%. The forecast from the state actuary, I think it's the state actuary that sets those, they're forecasting that as of July 1st next year, that rate will go down to 10.48%.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, that makes sense.
And I see someone's joined in, under Jessica's name. And you're muted. Are you just observing?
No, that's, that's Ron.
That Ron? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you Ron. All right, go ahead then Tara.
All right, well, does anybody have any other questions?
Doesn't appear to be.
If not, then I think I will pass the baton to Tammy.
All right, good afternoon, everybody.
Hello Tammy.
This is the Risk and Insurance Fund that we're talking about now. Right now, it was originally budgeted for 3.2, but with the Board's elimination of vacant positions, that'll go down to a 3.1, because we, we lost an administrative two, I believe, in our, in our HR department that was not filled yet. But this fund pretty much runs the safety program, runs the county's insurance portfolio, that's general liability, property insurance, plus the claims that go along with those. We do the Risk Management, Loss Control Services for the Office. And on the next slide, you'll see where our fund balance is, and that is been consistent based on what the actuarially recommended value is, where we keep, we keep our fund balance. Looking at the tenure financial, if you look at the highlighted 2021 and 2022, it's actually good news. Last year, the Board approved a policy level allowance of $100,000 in the 2020 budget for us to purchase a Risk Management Information System that would go hand in hand with the ERP. And so that was a one-time charge. So what you're seeing is a, the difference between the rates in 2020 and 2021 is a 3% decrease. It's about roughly $90,000. So it's a 3% decrease in allocation out to all the funds. And then the 2022 is basically a flat, just a flat renewal. And the assumptions in the cost plan is I assumed a 10% increase in the next two years in our general liability insurance, with a fairly flat insurance renewal for our property insurance. We had a really steep increase, if you recall, last year for both property and general liability, so I think those will level off this year and next year. But with that, rates are fairly stable, and it looks like we're still going to be in close to about $5 million actuarially recommended value. So with that, if you have questions?
Any questions Gary?
No.
No? I don't see Ty, any other questions? No, thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Pretty much is our rates. Maria, do you have any final comments, or Tara?
Okay, so this, this will come back to Ty, do you have anything to weigh in on?
No, good.
Okay, so this will come back to us on, go ahead, Robin.
So I do just want to ask a general question overall, and that is, none of these slides show the impact to the General Fund. So before the Board makes a decision on the rates, we would like to see what the impact to the General Fund will be.
Okay. My $90,000 decrease about, I know about 60% of it is General Fund, so it's about $54,000 decrease. Not a lot, but...
It'll offset the others.
Yes.
Close to that. All right, Ramiro?
Yeah, so that was what I was gonna ask. I will bring this to Tuesday's conversation with the Board for direction and decision. But along the lines with Robin requesting, it would be good to see what, somewhat of the spreadsheet, or some sort of, what is the, the actual increase that you're requesting? I know on the, on the Risk Fund, that is a decrease on the rates, but it would be good to have, what is the rate of increase? I know that on the Benefits Administration Fund, you're expecting an increase in 2022. By how much? I think it's, I don't know, 100 and double, as I stated. And in the split, what is General Fund and other funds? Just to help an understanding of the Board, what they be providing direction on.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah?
My question would be to the County Manager, what is the question gonna be for Tuesday? And my second question maybe would be to Robin, I don't know yet, but after we make commitments and end up with an ending fund balance, that money, even though it came from different funds, that all then becomes locked into a dedicated fund, and cannot be utilized for anything else, or what's the answer to that?
So once the money is paid into the restricted funds, it may only be used for the purpose of the restricted fund.
Okay, so even though it comes from the General Fund or other places, is that right?
That's right.
So what would be, what would we be looking for as a contribution from the General Fund to go into this vote that we will be taking? What, what amount of money would be committed?
That, that's exactly what we have asked HR to provide for Tuesday.
Okay, well, just give me a rough idea. I don't know, 60%, 40%?
Tammy just said it's 60% of the contribution to the risk pool, I would have to look at the other two. I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Okay, and, and what would that overall commitment be from the General Fund, just roughly?
That's, that's what we have to find out for you.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is, I'm contemplating not making a deposit to this fund from the General Fund, because that takes all of our leeway away in the future, should we need to run up against something. So I would rather keep it in the ending fund balance of the General Fund.
So what fund? What are the three funds?
The dedicated General Fund, not the dedicated funds.
They presented to you the Unemployment Fund, the Benefits of the Restriction Fund, and the Risk Management.
I know, the portion that comes out of General Fund, I'm, I mean, I'm just talking about this, I don't know enough about it. I might be, might be all wet, but I think it's worth asking, because I don't, I don't like making a commitment to a fund, knowing we're coming up against something tough, and then we would not be able to access that after we make that commitment.
So your, your, your comment makes sense to me, and what I would say is that your contributions, if you wish to reduce contributions to any of your restricted internal service funds, then that cannot be only from the General Fund. You would have to reduce the contributions to the restricted fund from all the funds that pay in, because we have a mandate in state law that costs are allocated in a fair and equitable manner. It, it's the, it's called the principle of the beneficiary pays. So if you'd like to reduce the amount contributed to these funds, you may do so, but it would have to be countywide, from all funds.
Okay, well then, just say we delayed making the deposit from those three funds into this fund. Why couldn't we add it later on, as long as we kind of get track of it?
Sorry, the rates you're considering right now is to add into the 2021, 2022 budget.
Okay, so there's a reason for it.
So you're, you're not making the deposits of this right now, because the decisions for the 2020 already been made last year.
We're doing, we're doing 21 now.
So this is for 2021, 2022, per person to the budget, so you will be making budget decisions at the end of the year.
Right, so the decision we're asking you to do now would be to set the rate, we'll, we'll ask you to do that, excuse me, set the rates on Tuesday, and then as the budget is developed for next biennium, these are next biennium's rates, then as we look at next biennium, if there is a need to reduce the budgets, we will look at all funds, and you could adjust the rates at that time. But we need guidance now to put the rates into the, the budget process, so that offices and departments can plan accordingly.
And is that rate being recommended, the 2%, is that it? What's the recommended rate being recommended?
That's what you just saw, if, I don't know who's got control of the slide deck, but if you could go back, I'll go all the way back to, yep, nope, go, go, yep, this...
There?
Go to the Unemployment Fund page, one left, more back. Back one more, there we go. So this says that for the Unemployment Fund, the rate is 0.3% of payroll costs. That's the rate that we're asking you to charge. It rates about $253,000 a year, and what we've asked HR to provide to you is, for Tuesday, is how much of an increase is this over prior years? I think the answer is none. And how much of this is General Fund? And they'll get back to us on that. So go forward two slides.
But it still looks, even though, how much is General Fund, if we've got that fairness doctrine in there, we have to make an equal reduction or increase, I guess, for all the funds.
So if you wanted something different than 0.3%, it would be applied to all funds. For Benefits Administration, the rate is, I don't see the rate on the page.
I, I guess I'd use a very simple analogy of, if I was putting meat in the freezer for the winter, I'd be putting it in the freezer I had access to, or keep it in the house instead of taking it out and putting it in the freezer. So I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't even, should cut that back even more, make it .01% or something. I, I really don't know the answer, I'm just wondering, why do we want to impede our ability to draw on that fund if we go into hard times?
So go back to the financial plan for the unemployment.
With all due respect, this is not a savings account.
I, I know it's not supposed to be.
But it, it is also serves a purpose. And, and each one of those provides services to employees. So if you, if, if the Board de-funds those funds, and will go in the red, then those services will not be provided to the employees.
Well, we could add to it later, we could keep it...
Well, you can, you can...
You can't add to it later?
That's why you do the decisions on a budget time.
I just don't like to limit our ability. I, I hate to put money in an account that we can't access when we go into tough times, that's all, all I'm wondering about.
So that is specific purpose.
Right, it is a specific...
I know, I know, but we might be fortunate on one end and not on another, and we won't be able to access it to buy tires for a car.
That's specifically why state law restricts the access to restricted funds.
I realize that, that's how come, I'm trying to figure out a way around the state law.
Go ahead, Robin.
So, so we wouldn't be going around state law, it is within your legal right to determine what the rate is. So as you set that rate, though, part of your consideration is for the restricted funds. So for example, the Unemployment Fund is the one that's on the screen right now. One of the reasons that you want to maintain an ending fund balance of about a million and a half in this fund is if you start to lay off employees, we have to pay their unemployment, and this is the fund it would come out of. So if, and, and these expenditure projections do not assume at this point in time, a large number of claims coming in. So one of the things you have to think about is, you certainly could decrease the amount going into this fund, but would that leave enough to cover claims, and would it meet cash flow needs? So those are the considerations. You can reduce the rate, but will this fund be financially stable? And I would suggest to you that those are the considerations for any of our internal service funds.
On this particular fund, we may be laying people off due to this COVID virus, so...
Which is a very good reason to not increase the rate.
Right, but is it a possibility that it meets the five-way test from COVID? I know generally, you can't supplement for a normal budgeted item, but maybe we didn't have enough money budgeted to make this up, so why couldn't we take CARES money and put into this fund if it meets the five-way test?
No, because this layoffs have not occurred.
Pardon? Right, I have a...
Specifically prohibited from supplanting.
Yeah, because the layoffs have not occurred. And the portion of the board has been provided, most likely will not occur before October 31st, based on what we know right now.
I know the answer to this question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Unemployment means you have no job. But are you saying no, Ron?
I am saying no, and I would want Maria to weigh in here too, but our employee, with a reduction in hours, will be able to access some percentage of their unemployment benefits.
That's exactly where I was going. Can we supplant their loss, their wage loss? Because they're unemployed for four hours, pay period, or a week, a week rather, eight hours a pay period, could this supplement that?
It, it will make up a fraction of what they lose in wages, and I, I need to defer to Maria.
I guess before Maria gets in there, I want to follow up on what Hutch said.
Well, hang on, hang on, we'll hear the answer first Gary, then we'll get your follow-up.
Okay.
So if an employee, let's say suffers a hours reduction, and they apply for unemployment, they could find that they could get a, a small portion of that. So they don't need to be completely laid off and unemployed, but if somebody went from a full FTE to a half FTE, they can file for unemployment, and then Employment Security determines what their benefit is, and they get that paid, and then unemployment charges us quarterly, and then we pay out of this fund.
But do, do you have any idea if that was, do they get like a 25% or 40%, 50%? Any idea what that would work out to be?
Because they, they calculate that, it's outside of our control.
Okay.
So I, it's very difficult to say, and it's based on how much the employee is earning. So I it's very difficult to say, and it's based on how much the employee is earning. Um, and so it's it's difficult to take a guess.
Boy, Robin, you picked up exactly where I was going. Gary, where's your follow up?
I guess uh, my follow up would be if we are basically laying somebody off for four hours a pay period, why couldn't we hire them back uh, for four hours a pay period on CARES funding? Because that's exactly what's causing the problem, and I think it meets the five-way test.
So if we were to uh, redirect an employee's time to where they were performing activities that are in direct response to COVID nineteen, then we could charge those hours, um, but they could not come back just to do their normal work.
Okay, well, let them come back and be safety inspectors for the COVID thing while they're still kind of maintaining. So we can bill it to CARES. We can come, we may have to be innovative and think out of the box.
Uh, Ty, you you want to get in on this? Do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, you guys are asking good questions. I'm just listening and trying to track it. I I don't think I totally understood the answer to your question, Hutch. Um, I understood your question, but I didn't totally understand the answer.
Yeah, it sounds like, well, I'll, Maria, I won't even try to put sound bites into you, but it sounds like it's out of our control. Employment security figures out what the the portion would be for repayment, but go ahead, Maria.
And it would only be a fraction of the what the employer in the employee's pay. So let's say in the furloughs or or reduction of hours that my pay is going to be reduced by eight hundred dollars um, for that four-hour loss. I'm not going to get eight hundred dollars in unemployment benefit. It's gonna be a very small fraction of that.
Okay, small.
I understand. I I got, somebody directed me to the to a a very long set of nested uh, links on the state's page about their system and the shared work program. And I kept reading and reading and reading and never really getting my brain around who qualified for shared work and how it worked and whether it would apply to us. And so I this is not an area that I have any familiarity with um, these labor issues or labor law issues and unemployment benefit issues.
We're we're all learning as we go.
And we are looking into the shared work program, and there's an application process. So uh, myself and staff are evaluating that as an option for the county and our employees.
If that is an option, uh, and it takes a while for the app to get through and whatnot, anything we can do to streamline this would be greatly uh, appreciated and beneficial.
Yeah, absolutely.
Amy, did you have something?
Nope.
Okay.
So what you're seeing here this afternoon are the rates that staff are proposing um, are recommending that you set for the ability to maintain these funds in a financially stable position and continue to pay the benefits to the employees. And for risk, it's to cover our uh, mandated uh, amount in the risk pool.
Okay.
You know.
And this was the rate here, the two nine one was was this year's, the two eight eight oh that I'm showing here is for twenty twenty one.
That's the amount that's allocated out, and you may recall seeing an extremely complicated a worksheet that distributes it by office and department. Um, that is partially based on um, risk factors and partially based on FTEs.
Correct.
Okay. Ron, do you have anything to say?
Well, Ron, Ron's gonna come in for the next half of this.
Okay.
Presentation.
Let's move right on.
Uh, nothing on this.
All right. Okay. All right. So we are done with ours. Ron, you're gonna share your screen?
Here we go.
Uh, do I share that or?
Yep, yep, I think you do.
How do I do that?
Uh, you go down to the bottom.
Thank you, Ron.
Say share screen and then pull up your PowerPoint.
Uh, share screen, okay.
Mm-hmm. And do you have your PowerPoint open?
So first.
I did, uh, let me see, how do I get there?
Uh, the the person who was sharing their screen, they need to stop sharing their screen.
They just stop? Oh, the person that was? Yeah.
I think I got it. Did you?
It switched. Oh, there.
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, jeez.
That's it, okay.
What were you reading?
Oh, yes. Just an internet page I.
That's the governor from New York and.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a little bit more interesting and was probably the cost plan, but you know what? By the way, if we get disconnected, uh, I'm from, you know, talking from Shelton, so Robin knows this just about as well as I do, so. Just in case, uh.
Go right ahead, Ron.
Okay, it's uh, all right. Uh, this is the presentation on the uh, two thousand twenty one cost allocation plan. Uh, bottom line upfront first before we go into an overview. What uh, will be generated uh, for the general fund in two thousand twenty one uh, should be that seven million eighty six thousand dollars. So on a comparative basis, it's about four hundred and forty seven thousand dollars more than we're billing in two thousand twenty. So that's um, that's what it is. So how how much is that? Well, seven million, but that uh, you know, your primary uh, revenue sources in the general fund are of course property taxes and sales taxes. You also have intergovernmental revenues. So for me, I would kind of look at that seven million as your fourth largest revenue source to the general fund. Uh, from my standpoint, and uh, so I'll go to the next slide here. Uh, we'll uh, look at an overview uh, the cost plan. We'll spend just a little bit of more time on this slide. Cause I know it's kind of difficult getting into this uh, indirect costs and what that means. So a cost allocation plan is a plan for billing the cost of internal services provided by the general fund to other funds. So it's similar to an internal service fund, but it's different. Cause because all uh, there's not a separate fund. This money's going right to the general fund. Uh, we are reimbursing costs uh, that are incurred right out of the general fund. Uh, and uh, there's no fund balance. Uh, there's no rates. It's just the cost that's incurred. And and then billing that cost out in some equitable manner to the benefiting users. Sure. Uh, so what are these services? Uh, for me, I I kind of understand it best if I put them in three categories.
Oh.
Uh, that are cost services that are private provided by the general fund. Uh, one is real standard, uh, human resources accounting. Um, standard things, you could, the civil section of the prosecuting attorney's office is also in there. Non-standard, uh, at least for me, would be the board of county commissioners and assessor, because you can argue the benefits and disadvantages of that. You could say, discuss whether it's an external or internal service. Uh, and then you have another category which are need to justify, uh, my my words. Uh, and we I would include in that the planning and emergency service departments within the general fund. Because we uh, based on board policy, we classify those as internal services. And we allocate that out to the benefiting users within the general fund. We developed a process for doing that. Uh, service costs are billed to service users uh, at the discretion and direction of the board of county commissioners. So that is totally up to you. You could bill nothing and you could bill everything. A little one-minute history that I think will kind of clarify what your policy issues are. So uh, for years, we just had a partial cost plan here at the county. That was before the one percent initiative that limited property taxes generated uh, that for local governments in state Washington. Uh, and was also before the uh, great recession of two thousand eight. And so that all changed around two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. And we went from a full uh, partial cost plan, only some services were billed and up to only some funds. We went from a partial to a full. So uh, it's kind of like a dial. We turn that dial all the way to the right to a full cost plan. So your policy decisions are pretty simple. Uh, you could either keep it the way it is, uh, and approve it as is, or you can go back. Uh, and uh, to more of a partial cost plan for one reason or another. And that's pretty much it for the.
Before we before we leave that concept, Ron, what would be the impact of going to a partial cost plan?
Well, it would be a reduction in what you generate. I mean, so if if you wanted to go back to where you were before, you would uh, maybe exclude the board of county commissioners from what you bill out and uh, for your office and the assessor. For example, the assessor is billed to uh, roads, because they benefit from a property tax levy and also medic one. Medic one benefits from that property tax levy.
So so dialing it back would mean less revenue to the general fund?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
That that is correct, absolutely. And we got it all the way to the max at this point.
What, Robin, what could we do or?
So uh, those are the services. So what about the, who who do we bill? Well, we bill all funds. That's part of the full cost plan.
Hold it, Commissioner, uh, Edward's got a question.
Okay.
This this would be to Ron or or Robin, I guess. What, if anything, can we do to alleviate the pressure on the general fund? Is there anything? Sounds like we can't do anything to alleviate that pressure on the general fund from this activity.
This this activity is, as Ron said, at the max. We we have.
So we can't alleviate the pressure anymore on general.
That letter answered.
That is correct. Yeah, because it's we you have that dial and it's turned all the way to the right. You allocated every service cost, internal service cost that we can identify within the general fund that is providing a benefit to another fund that has another revenue source. We're we're billing out to all those funds. So it's so it it is all the service costs to all the legally billable funds. So I can't turn it up anymore. You can just turn it back.
Okay.
Okay, continue, Ron.
Okay, so uh, so we talked about the services. So the you uh, the billable users, well, they're all funds. Now, there are some exceptions. Uh, some costs cannot be billed to some funds. They're not legally billable. Uh, so that reduces what we can bill a little bit, not a whole lot, but it reduces some. But also, we uh, remember it was just paid out of the general fund. So ju- the general fund departments are also benefit from those services. So we don't build the general fund because we would, in essence, be billing ourselves. We wouldn't generate any revenue for that. Uh, and then we also, another exception to who we bill uh, would be outside agencies. Uh, and uh, we can't, uh, we could bill them if we wanted, but they don't, wouldn't pay because there's no legal obligation for outside agencies to pay for services that are mandated to be provided by the county. Uh, that's primarily the assessor, uh, a se- a treasurer and financial services through their activities, processes that that they uh, they perform. So that's the users, a little bit unplanned development. Uh, service costs are assigned to users by activity drivers. Counts payable by counts payable invoices, uh, legal service hours, uh, legal services out of the prosecuting attorney's office by uh, time provided. So uh, now here's the on on where we can max it. And uh, Robin's mentioned this before on uh, on just not billing the general fund. Uh, same issue applies here. Uh, we must uh, equit- equitably bill costs, okay? And uh, and so uh, w- w- we can kind of tweak it a little. Uh, uh, there are uh, maybe, and we've kind of done a little tweak, and I think we can, but uh, uh, it it were to a certain point, you have to uh, make sure it's equitable because you're billing these departments. And the cost plan has to stand on its own. You have to be able to justify it, and it has to withstand audit scrutiny. So that's uh, yeah, that's obviously a key objective uh, in the methods that have been developed for allocating and billing these costs out. It's on a uh, cost, it's on a two-year lag, so for two thousand twenty one, we're using the last actual year, which is two thousand nineteen. We're doing that in in the year you're in, two thousand twenty. And uh, the users have the option of requesting a general fund subsidy from the BOCC. That's how um, uh, we're able to uh, bill all funds. Because legally billable funds, because we give them the option. If you can't pay this, uh, ju- you can always request a subsidy from the board of county commissioners. Uh, billing process, uh, that primarily uh, applies to the, you know, the the statements we send out. Uh, there are detailed statements. Uh, the key thing in there is we uh, explain the changes uh, and uh, if there are significant changes in the bill, in the costs are billed. Uh, we uh, try to really explain those. And and so so they understand them when they get those statements. Um, user, of course, has the right to question and request explanations, and this is key, uh, no current disputable issues at this point in time. I am really thrilled by that one. So uh, and we're about done. Uh, BOCC policy issue. Uh, this is the summarized draft, two thousand twenty one full cost plan. We are asking for tentative BOCC approval or alternatively, any directives on desired changes by the BO uh, CC. And the last two slides, I was just more uh, numbers here. So this is the services. Now, to kind of understand this, go to the bottom line. Remember that seven million under two thousand twenty one? That's down there, the last year, uh, which is two thousand twenty. Uh, so what we're billing in two thousand twenty is six billion, six hundred and thirty eight thousand, six hundred and ninety five. It was at four hundred and forty something thousand started to increase. Now, the plan is not a seven million plan. It's a twenty one million plan. Okay, so why don't we bill out twenty one million? Well, it's part of that equity thing. Uh, all that is either the general fund, outside agencies that we can't bill, and a very minor portion is the funds we can't legally bill. So and you can see uh, what generates the most. Well, you can see financial services. We're gonna bring in one point four million for financial services. Uh, they're they're kind of the highest. You know, the commissioners is right, number two there, one million, three hundred and thirty five, three hundred, one million, three hundred and forty five. Planning is number three, one million thirteen. Uh, that's gonna be generated for the general fund in two thousand twenty one. So that's uh, uh, kind of a overview of that. And then here's the uh, who we bill, and it's uh, just for brevity's sake, it's by department. So uh, Public Works is uh, is of course the top top dog there, so to speak, and uh, uh, they'll be paying one million, nine hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. Uh, next highest is central service. Uh, we build such central service department to it of the cost plan. Uh, and you can see on down, uh, you know, public health pays a little bit there too. So I get the same numbers. There's the twenty one million that were part of the plan and the seven million that we're gonna generate for the general fund in two thousand twenty one. And that is all I can think of for the plan. Uh, do uh, I can go back to any of the slides or any questions? Uh?
Yeah, uh, I have any questions?
What's that? So you uh, threw up the one of the last slides, two thousand eleven, is that when we started turning the, that when we turned the dial fully to the right as you put it?
Yeah, it was sort of, wasn't really in the slide. It was just referenced in the, in in kind of the board policy decisions. But yes, it was around, if I remember correctly. And it was uh, kind of over two or three years because we went to a full cost and then we also added the planning and emergency service departments to the cost plan. And that really took place, I think, over two or three years. So it kind of two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, something like that.
And I I mean, all counties have the same struggles with their financing structure. Does this is this approach done uh, kind of across the state or is it hit and miss, you know?
Uh, it uh, uh, I think it's kind of done across the state. It's kind of a talk, a good topic for good, good audit issue for the state auditor's office because frequently when it's done by some smaller counties and others, uh, they don't document how they do it. They don't provide their methodology, and that is jumped on by the state auditor's office like you wouldn't believe. That's a a frequent uh, finding. We are kind of pushing the envelope a little bit here with our plan. There's not a whole lot of cost plans that have the planning and emergency service departments. As far as I know, classified as internal services and allocated out to the cost plan. As far as I know, classified as internal services and allocated out to the cost plan. Uh, we put a lot of effort, Robin's helped with this too, uh, in terms of justifying and explaining and coming up with a good rationale for doing that. Because if there's any weak portion of that, not weak, if there's any questionable portion of the plan that, that would be questioned by the state auditors, it would be those two. Uh, we've done real well so far. They haven't, you know, they haven't brought it up. Uh, when they audit, they kind of primarily look at how much we're getting from the utility funds.
Right.
Uh, that's kind of, because they really look at that because they have separate revenue sources and utility funds. We don't generate a lot because our utilities are so much smaller comparatively than they are for other local governments. Except for the solid waste program.
Right. I would say that um allocation of internal services is very common in government, uh, both at the state and local level. And our um state auditor has audited internal service costs. I can't remember the year of the uh audit. It was a statewide audit. Um, and our county follows best practices that are uh listed in that audit. And um, our, as Ron had said, um, our plan has been audited by the state auditor uh on more than one occasion in the last 10 years and has passed every time.
Yeah, that's good news. Any other questions, Ty?
I have one more. Just who, um, some of these, I can understand how they're set. Another ones seem a little murkier um versus like internal service rates where it's like phones and stuff. So who's, who actually does the calculation of what exactly is gonna get billed out, billed at what cost?
That's me. I, yeah, I, I knew that. But by the way, I was gonna mention this in terms of policy issues. You know, in the past, the board has gotten involved in the process and how it's done. It's been primarily when we've uh added new services to the plan, uh, when we're struggling with the allocation methods. They've gotten involved maybe two, three, four times. Uh, otherwise, the staff gets involved. The Robin has gotten involved recently with the uh allocations uh for, for the planning department. Uh, and I think we got those issues resolved in the last year or two. So uh, yeah, but it's uh primarily me, uh, uh, unless uh something comes, uh, is uncovered and then that's when Robin gets involved in. And like I said, sometimes they called the Board of County Commissioners in the past. So sometimes the board has gotten involved.
Quite a while.
But it's primarily financial services, yeah.
Yeah, it's been quite some time since the board got involved in the nitty gritty of how to set the rates.
Yes.
Um, I would say that the, kind of the test is uh for internal services is who is the customer? And if you think about um, a public health, your customer are the citizens. Uh, for internal services, your customer is another county officer department. Um, it's generally not a service to the citizen. We don't provide phones to citizens. We provide phones to um all the other offices and departments inside the county and the same with computers and um legal advice from the prosecutor's office, the civil division. Their customer is the county officer department. That's the real test for an internal service. And we have guidance from both the federal and the state level that if that's not your customer, you're not an internal service. So it's not like we could just decide to um allocate out the permit center. Um, there, there's very defined, you know, rules on, on what's an internal service. So we really have maximized that. And as Ron has said, um, planning and emergency service in particular, um, we have a justification that has passed audit, but it is a little unusual.
That, that, that was a stretch.
Yes.
So to use an example that I, you, you alluded to in passing, the, you're saying the Public Works pays the assessor for collecting the property tax because some of that property tax flows back to Public Works and the road fund? Is that, is that the, that's the logic?
That's real close. Uh, wha, what it actually is, is they benefit from a levy to the property tax fund. So what we do is we uh calculate the cost of the assessor's office and generate a por, and, and compute a portion of that service cost that benefits the roads because they're getting the levy. Without the assessor's office, they would have no property tax levy.
And they take their proportionate share of the assessor's operations that, that comes in tax to their, to their funds?
Yes, it's by, actually, it's by tax levy. We add up all the tax levies. The biggest one by far is the school districts. Uh, and uh, that's where most of the costs go. That's where most of the benefit is.
But we can't bill them cause they're out external.
Exactly. Well, well, we could actually bill them, but they wouldn't pay. And they would get real irritated with, with you sending them a bill. Uh, they, but they, it wouldn't do you any good cause they wouldn't pay. They don't have to pay. Not legally required.
Interesting. Thank you.
Gary, you have any questions?
Yeah, why doesn't uh what uh Ron just said as far as the assessor and public works? Why wouldn't that be applicable to doggone near everything that we did? Because if the assessor wasn't there, we wouldn't have anything, you might say.
Because there are only four funds that receive property tax levy.
Yes, it's real limited.
Medic one, uh.
And do we do it with all the funds that do it?
Gary, 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 let her finish, please. I'm trying to get to the list.
So it's general fund, medic one, conservation futures and um the road fund. Those are the only funds that receive a property tax levy.
Okay, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, no, that, that's good. I, I gotta get out of here. I got another meeting. But uh, I'd ask Ron if he can play a Lawrence D'Amelio on that piano behind you.
Real basic, you wouldn't wanna listen if I played. Trust me.
All right, any final questions from anybody? Ran overtime.
Hey, Ron, can, can you send your PowerPoint presentation so I can, we can make copies for commissioners?
Pardon? I didn't hear you.
Send your PowerPoint.
Send the PowerPoint presentation so I, we can share with the commissioners because we did not receive your PowerPoint ahead of time.
Oh, I sent it. Uh, but yeah, so yeah, I will. Do you want me to send it directly to you?
No.
I will. I will, yeah. I'll see, see, Robin.
Thank you, Ron, and uh thanks, Ramiro, for bringing that up. All right, thank you all very much. Good information and we are now ending this meeting. Bye-bye.
Thank you, commissioners.